The time has come for the Monday, November 3rd, 2025, regular Waukegan City Council meeting. Roll call, please.
Alderman Martinez.
Present.
Alderman Felix.
Present.
Alderman Newsome.
Present.
Alderman Turner.
Present.
Alderman Donaworth.
Present.
Alderman Florian.
Present.
Alderman Hayes.
Present.
Alderman Bolton.
Present.
Alderman Guzman.
Present.
Mayor Cunningham.
Present.
You have a quorum, sir.
We have a quorum. Item number two invocation will be led by Your Excellency O'Malley, followed by Pledge of Allegiance led by our ROTC members here tonight. All rise for the prayer.
Word of thanks to Your Honor and Alderman for welcoming me to lead a prayer. Pastor and most blessed Trinity Parish, a large parish in our community, we have a large Hispanic community. Thank you for the warm welcome to the Spanish-speaking community in Waukegan. This is a prayer inspired by certainly Saint John Paul II. He led this prayer when he canonized Trivia Roma, Saint Trivia Roma is the patron saint for immigrants in the Catholic Church. Dear Father in heaven, you have listened to us and you like us to ask for your favors for your friends and family. As your children and souls in need to the intercession of Saint Trivia Roma, your beloved servant, shower your graces on all immigrants. Help these men and women, simple and humble heart, to know how to adore you as Saint Trivia did during his life. He gave his life, loving God above all things. Let us give you the best of ourselves without any condition. Just as Saint Trivia did, who was faithful to you. And these immigrants, may they continue their work in our community, make their sacrifices, their prayers, caring for their families. Praise and bless you tirelessly. May be your divine plan, give them strength, earn his faith, great humility. In all this with great hope, we also ask your blessing on these young men and women also from this community who are enrolling in the armed forces for them, their safety, their well-being, for many parishioners who have entered into the armed forces over this past year. So be it, holy Trivia Roma, pray for all these men, women, and children that we hold in our hearts. And we ask this in Jesus's name, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with equal justice for all.
Thank you, Excellency. Thank you, JRC. That was one C, was Mayor's comments. I want to start off by taking a moment to honor the late Donald Don Weekly. Mr. Weekly had a love for the city of Waukegan and was determined to make a difference in his community. For decades, Mr. Weekly held the position of Alderman, Second Ward Alderman, following a career as a Director of Governmental Service for the city of Waukegan. Personally, I had an opportunity to learn many things from Don as a little kid, working out at Pete's Fruit Market, to why I became a leader in the First Ward under then late Mayor Bill Durkin, and Don Weekly was the Director of Governmental Services. I would always be grateful for his service to our city and to our country. His memorial services will be held on Saturday, November 15th, from 11:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. at Marsh Funeral Home located in Gurnee, Illinois. You might have seen already on social media, but I'm excited to share with everyone, the resurfacing project of Washington Street is moving in full force. As you can see, we brought an example of that road right here. Third Ward Alderman and I stopped by early today to see the work in progress. Even took some souvenirs of the famous street that has been talked about so much because of its condition. We heard we heard you, Waukegan, Washington Street will be resurfaced. Thanks not only to this body, but to all of you, and certainly to the engineers, Public Works Department and all who had a hand in that. As you, as we move through this resurfacing project of rebuild Waukegan, please be careful as you drive down the street. It's an active construction zone, and I might add, slow down by the construction zones, please. City of Waukegan will celebrate Veterans Day with a ceremony on Tuesday, November 11th, at 11:00 a.m. at Veterans Memorial Plaza, right here on Washington Park. This year, we are commemorating 80th anniversary of the end of World War II. There will be a small procession from City Hall to the plaza, leaving at 10:45. Feel free to join all of there. If I'm not mistaken, I think our ROTC members are going to be there. I'm going to do some bragging, if I'm not mistaken, you're also the largest or one of the largest in the country, junior ROTC program. Hey, hey. This is always a special day as, yeah, give it a clap, yeah, for Waukegan. Thank you. It's always a special day as we get to honor the men and women who have served our country. With that being said, I'm excited to announce that the city of Waukegan has partnered with Cool Food Pantry in Waukegan to collect much-needed supplies for active-duty and veteran families. From shampoo to cleaning supplies, there are several items in need that go beyond just food. You can find this list of items at one of the Veterans Assistant Boxes within City Hall. I'm happy that we are able to work together to help veterans and their families. Veterans have given so much in service to our country, our state, our city, and our, certainly our county. So it's only right that we give back to them in their time of need. All right, Saint Demetrius Greek Orthodox Church Fall Food Fest. Veterans and active-duty service members eat free. I'm going to say that again. Veterans and active-duty service members eat free with ID. It starts November 7th and 8th, 2025, which is this Friday and this Saturday, starting 11:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. Authentic Greek cuisine and Greek pastries. Located at 1400 North Oak Plain Road, Libertyville, Illinois. And basically that is 120 to Oak Plain Road, probably about a good quarter of a mile on the right-hand side. You can't miss it, it's a nice, beautiful Saint Demetrius Greek Orthodox Church. So please join us if you like good food and olive oil, that's the place to be Friday and Saturday. Veteran Supply Drive, as we spoke about earlier, Cool Food Pantry, 800 West Glen Flora Avenue, Waukegan, Illinois. They are doing their supply drive. Don't hesitate to stop over there for those need kind of a location. It's right at Glen Flora and, what's that street? Is that Chestnut? No, is that Chestnut? Yes, Chestnut, Glen Flora and Chestnut. All right, those are my comments for tonight. Item two, resolution proclamation, presentations and appointments. Recognition of our Waukegan junior ROTC young men and young ladies who have already committed. Is that right? Who've, yeah, they're shaking their heads. They have already committed to the armed forces, the various divisions. David, are you going to come up and give all one of our, the leaders?
Major, Major will join you in the front, we'll read out the names, present the certificates, and you can shake your hand.
All right, and I want to say this, they have committed already. That means you've signed the paper, you're over 18, and you're ready to go. Is that correct? Oh goodness. All right, Major, I'm going to sit over here.
So the first cadet to be recognized for enlistment in the United States Armed Forces is Axel Alvarez. In recognition of your enlistment in the United States Marine Corps, presented on November the 3rd, 2025.
Excellent, right here, sir. Congratulations. You sit right, stay, yep, stay right there with us. Major?
The next cadet to enlist in the United States Armed Forces is Caesar Salazar. In recognition of your enlistment in the Army National Guard, presented on November the 3rd, 2025.
Congratulations.
The next cadet who happens to be the top cadet in our program is Cadet Anna Martinez Martinez. In recognition of your enlistment in the Army National Guard, presented on November the 3rd, 2025.
Top gun, huh? Yeah. All right, right there. Martinez, you double down on the names.
And finally, Cadet Jaleen Andrade. Andrade? In recognition of your enlistment in the Army National Guard, presented on November the 3rd, 2025.
Thank you. Congratulations, right here. You want to bring the rest of your? We have some, we have some more who was committed too.
Kind of pull the fast one on them.
Okay.
We're also recognizing the instructors from the ROTC program. So when I say your name, please join us up there, and we didn't leave you off. Marquez Kelly. Chad Born. Sergeant First Class Jeffrey Nasser.
Sarge. I don't know you. Oh wait, sir.
Master Sergeant Allison Johnson. First Sergeant Edek Franco. Command Sergeant Major Randy Thomas. And last, but certainly not least, Mayor, Major Ron Painter.
Thank you, Major. You know, before we start, our young men and young ladies do some incredible things. They're doing the things that we've asked them to do to be successful. Oftentimes, we don't reward that by highlighting what they're doing. These young men and young ladies are taking us to another step. They are enlisting to the armed forces to protect and serve our country so we can do exactly what we're doing right now, have a full-blown council with no problem. So thank you for your service. More importantly, thank you for being the example in our community for our young men and young ladies in the Waukegan public school system, junior ROTC. Now's the time we take a picture with the baldy Alderman in the back, right? So you stay where you're at. Yeah?
One, two, three.
Can you do us a favor? My part of the red C, there you go, right there, so this is right in the front. This will be a great. If you guys would like to leave, you feel free to go, all right? I know, got some things going on. Thank you again. To the instructors, instructors, thank you for what you do for our young men and young ladies. Take care. All right. Item number three, audience time. Madam Clerk.
Thank you, sir. We have a few people to talk tonight, you have three minutes. Go ahead, I'm going to mention your name, go to the left-hand, no, my left. Go to the east side of the room, you'll have three minutes. The first one will be Marilyn McClelland for the library. Fran Jurgens, Jurgens Mayor. Margaret Carrasco, Joe Kopsick, Clyde McLemore, and Rob Salazar. Marilyn McClelland from the library. Fran Jurgensen Mayor. Margaret Carrasco, Joe Kopsick, Clyde McLemore, and Rob Salazar. Go ahead, Ms. Marilyn.
Okay, so we're here representing the Waukegan Public Library, and my part is in Spanish. So I'm wondering if Fran should go first, just so that I'm just really just translating it in Spanish. Probably makes more sense, yeah? All right.
Thank you and good evening. My name is Fran Jurgensmeyer, Collection Manager at the Waukegan Public Library, and I'm joined by Marilyn McClelland, our Customer Service Manager. In partnership with Waukegan's Jingle on Genesee, the Waukegan Public Library is proud to collaborate with the city of Waukegan and the Waukegan Chamber of Commerce as hosts of the annual Tree Lighting and Kris Kringle Market. This festive market will feature crafts, local vendors, and a special visit from Santa. The market will be open from 4:00 to 8:00 p.m. on Saturday, November 29th, with free pictures from, with Santa from 6:00 to 7:00 p.m. We're thrilled to welcome over 30 local vendors, offering one-of-a-kind handmade items, including jewelry, scarves, paintings, and much more. We hope you'll join us for an evening of holiday cheer, community spirit, and seasonal shopping. Thank you.
Hola y buenas noches, mi nombre es Marilyn McClelland, y soy la gerente de servicio de cliente, y estoy acompañada con Fran Jurgensmeyer, que es gerente de colección de la biblioteca pública de Waukegan. En asociación con Jingle in Genesee de Waukegan, la biblioteca pública de Waukegan se enorgullece de colaborar con la ciudad de Waukegan y la cámara de comercio de Waukegan como anfitriones de la iluminación anual de los árboles y el mercado de Kris Kringle. Este mercado festivo contará con artesanos, vendedores locales, y una visita especial de Papa Noel. El mercado estará abierto de 4:00 hasta las 8:00 de la tarde, sábado el 29 de noviembre, con fotos gratis con Papa Noel de 6:00 a 7:00 de la tarde. Estamos encantados de dar la bienvenida a más de 30 proveedores locales que ofrecen artículos hechos a mano únicos, incluyen ollas, joyas, bufandas, pinturas, y mucho más. Unase con nosotros para una noche de alegría de navideño espíritu y con la comunidad y compras de temporada. Será un evento divertido y todos son bienvenidos, gracias por su atención.
Thank you, Margaret Carrasco.
Good evening. The Fiesta's Patriots Organization wants to announce a Waukegan tradition. Mark your calendars, Sunday, December 21st, because what you will see, no other town in Lake County has. Forget Gurnee Mills, Hawthorne, Woodfield, where they charge $80 just to take a picture with Santa nowadays. It's outrageous. Folks, we're going to take it all the way this year, okay? Get your cell phones streaming live, drones, track us down. As Santa and his elves will be cruising down the streets of Waukegan, loaded with 5,000 toys, and we're going to be kicking off, ending, arriving at Toyland, which is also known as La Canoa, Banquet Hall, okay? It's free, we'll have free, we want family photos. The entire family, this is Waukegan, okay? You bring Grandma, you bring Grandpa, you bring your, all your cousins, your aunties, everybody. It's a family event. Santa's elves will be, will have games, music, dancing, the best entertainment, and a climax at 4:00 when Santa's best elf, Prince Jaden, will begin drawing winners of the mega giveaway of 100 prizes, promoting Waukegan local businesses, such as certificates for $100 of free groceries delivered to your house, free dinner certificates, car service, haircut, et cetera, okay? This is not one of those events that focuses on materialistic. You get a number, you pick your toy, and you walk out. No, no, no. This is a celebration of the community of families, okay? What, of, what Waukegan is. So you, it's going to be a rocking event. And any person that has a problem, doesn't want to be around millions of immigrants, African-Americans, Muslim, Greek, Ukrainian, poor people, whatever, don't go, okay? Because this is a Waukegan event where everybody is the same. We have all handmade new costumes this year, okay? And we want to personally invite of our elected officials to come out. We, it's a first come, you have to wear a shirt, but it's a first come basis for the toys. I'm sure we'll always have extra kids that show up. But, and here's the flyer for it, you'll be seeing signs everywhere. Some of the activities, Christmas caroling, glitter tattoos. We have also music, contests for the outfits, it's going to be lots of fun.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Thank you, Joe Kopsick.
As pleased as I am to see that the city of Waukegan has passed a resolution that takes a major step towards prohibiting ICE from using city property to enforce the Trump administration's immigration policy, I also agree with those who have declined to celebrate until after Waukegan takes more tangible steps towards actually implementing such a policy. That is, passing and enforcing an ordinance providing the same, as North Chicago and the Lake County Board have done. I look forward to seeing more work done on this as soon as possible, and I hope the city's lawyers are looking forward and preparing for the potential lawsuits that may result from those steps. I can't overstate how serious the situation is with ICE. We're looking at ICE using military bases, helicopters, Trump deploying the National Guard to Portland and Chicago. It's basically an act of war against Americans in our own cities, potential violations of the Posse Comitatus Act. ICE agents refusing to identify themselves, which makes it easier for ordinary kidnappers to kidnap people and hold them ransom. Now, even though I'm white, my grandma was Italian, and she died five years ago before I found out whether she renounced her ability to become an Italian citizen. So if birthright citizenship ever goes away, I could get deported, I don't know. So if anyone thinks that this doesn't affect me because I'm white or because I'm a citizen, or yourself, it does. So, and there's also foreign prisons in Panama that citizens are not, that Trump is talking about sending citizens to foreign prisons. So, the last thing I want to do is lecture struggling people about why they shouldn't vote for Democrats, but we also have to understand why and how we got here. Kamala Harris went to Guatemala and told people, "Don't come to America because of the COVID crisis." Barack Obama broke deportation records, and he said, "If you came here illegally, it won't be a free ride. You have to learn English and go back to the line." Democrats supported slavery in the Ku Klux Klan. Now people say, "The party's switched sides." Well, that's debatable. Lincoln switched sides, LBJ switched sides. There's plenty of Democrats who have done things wrong. I debated a woman about 15 years ago about some Obama policies, and she said, "You don't understand, the state government trumps local government, and the federal government trumps state government." It's like, well, what trumps the federal government? Trump, Trump's illegal actions, now Trump. It's like, we don't just have to obey the federal government top-down, because as soon as, as soon as your party is no longer in control, that doesn't work. See, the Democrats have kind of enabled the situation we have now with Trump because they've insisted that everything be done by the book, and it's legalism. That's what the Pharisees did, that's what got Jesus killed. And Johnny Savory said last night at the VLM event, "What did Jesus do? He didn't deserve what happened to him." So there's more, there's more to morality than obeying the law. We need to, we need to have more people have education about what their other options are. It's like, I get if you don't want to vote for Republicans, but don't vote for people just because they're not Republicans. There's Greens, there's Libertarians, there's Constitution Party, Socialist Party, explore your options.
Thank you, sir, thank you. Clyde McLemore.
Good evening, Counsel, I'm Clyde McLemore, Executive Director for Black Lives Matter, also the founder of the Black Lives Matter Resource Center. You know, politics is a funny game. You know, I've lost friends, I gained friends through politics. And I've been called everything. I was told that I was a house-in because I didn't speak on this tour. Then they say this administration don't have black people, but white people, but we got Josh, we got Blake, we got Garland, you know? I see a lot of black people that's in this administration along with a black mayor. I even see a black city council over there. But, you know, this, this touring thing, you know, I was asked by the owner, "Don't say nothing." So I didn't say nothing. I spoke with the mayor, I spoke to certain people, and that's what I did. I was told, "Don't say nothing." You know, but I've been told that you're the founder of Black Lives Matter, and you're supposed to speak up. But I can only do what the, what the owner asks me to do, you know? And if the mayor said, you know, I've talked to him, and I don't like Whitmore. I proved to this council that Whitmore is overcharging black and brown people. I proved that, I brought the paperwork in here, I showed you all that. You know, y'all say, "Well, his daughter got it, now Randy ain't got it no more." Randy still run that place, you know? Ain't no secret about it. So, you know, So, you know, I, I mean, it's just strange how people that call themselves friends, but when, that's the mayor's perk. He could do what he want. I mean, do we like it? It's his perk. If you was the mayor, that would be your perk. That comes with who you let your wagon to, you know? But I mean, and it's like, because of my position in the community, and I didn't say nothing, I was called a house. And I, I think that was really, 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 really upsetting to me because I've done so much for the black and brown community here. I will take a bullet. I will go to jail. I will go to hell for justice. And I mean, I just had to say that because I've been hearing all this talk in the community about this tour. You know, man, we got bigger problems, you know? And I understand Ryan has done a whole lot.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, Mr. McLemore. Rob Salazar.
Good evening, Mayor Cunningham and members of the council. As some of you may know by now, my name is Rob Salazar, and I'm a lifelong born and raised resident of Waukegan. As I talk to the residents about the newly passed resolution, what it means, what it doesn't mean, my main priority now is doing what I can and using my platform and my network to inform as many people as I can. As you guys have seen even tonight, there's still a lot of misinformation going around from a lot of people. So that's my main concern, is the people that I can reach, is informing them the best that I can. And I want to thank Alderman Felix and Chief of Staff Josh May for meeting with me and helping me out with that. One of the biggest concerns I've seen when I've been, or I've heard when I'm talking to people is, obviously, as you guys seen, they're not just taking criminals like they say. They're, they're taking hard-working people. They're taking hard-working fathers, grandfathers, uncles, brothers, you know, people that the families relied on for a very long time to support and, and, you know, bring home that paycheck. And that's their biggest concern right now is they're gone, and they're still left there with the bills. So as I talk to them about what we're doing, what we possibly can do, and, you know, unfortunately, what we can't do, just to address their biggest concern, one of the things I want to ask from you guys is to at least consider drafting some kind of local rent stabilization, some kind of ordinance to help out with the people that way. I know that the state has been trying to pass HB 3874, and it's not been working. So far, nothing's become law. So families are vulnerable right now. That's all I can think of that we could possibly do is to try and help them at this level is to kind of set the example for the other municipality cities and people around. If they can't get it done at the state level, we'll take care of our people here at the local level. So a local ordinance could ease the burden, prevent displacement, give families a chance to stay in their homes while recovering from sudden losses like this. So Waukegan's always been a city of compassion and community. This is something you've always stressed in these meetings. So this is a tangible way to show that we stand with those people. You guys have already chose to show unanimously that you stand with us. Don't let it stop there, please. If you consider drafting something like that, that's the biggest concern I've been hearing from these people. We let them know about, they know about food pantries. They can get food from there. They know about community action partnership, you know, some that helps with utilities. But there's something that we can do to help them out because their biggest concern is the year's almost over, just like last year. When the new year comes, rent's going to go up, and they don't have that main provider. So if we could at least consider that, that's what I'm asking here today. Thank you for your time and for listening.
Thank you, sir. Mayor, that concludes the audience.
Thank you to all who spoke. Item four, consent agenda. Items on the consent agenda are considered routine and non-controversial and will be approved by one motion. If, if one board member wishes to have a separate vote on any item, it will be pulled from the consent agenda and voted on separately. Motion by Alderman, Alderman, I'm sorry, Alderman Florian, second by Alderman Bolton, to approve, I'm sorry, motion to approve regular meeting minutes from October 20, 2025. Item B, 4B, motion to approve special meeting minutes from Monday, October 2027. Correction, October 27, 2025. 4C, motion to approve vendor payments, November 3, 2025, totaling $3,399,554.49. 4D, motion to approve and ratify regular payroll dated October 31, 2025, total amount of $2,584,487.27. Item 4E, motion to approve and ratify miscellaneous payroll, PD, HB, BNCT, cash out, manual check, and final payout dated October 31, 2025, in a total amount of $32,232.2. 4F, resolution approving procurement road sought from Compass Minerals America per Section 2-4-5, parentheses, I, parentheses, III, joint purchasing through the State of Illinois CMS Services Contract for a not-to-exceed amount of $555,000. 4G, resolution approving procurement of liquid de-icer, the juice, from Industrial Systems per Section 2-4-5-8, parentheses, I, parentheses, I, sole source is not to exceed an amount of $45,000. 4H, resolution approving an addendum to May 6, 2024, intergovernmental agreement with PACE concerning bus shelters advertising ad and bus shelters at 318 Belvedere Road. Any questions to the motion? Roll call, please.
Alderman Martinez. Felix.
Aye.
Newsom.
Aye.
Turner.
Aye.
Donahue.
Aye.
Florian.
Aye.
Hayes.
Aye.
Bolton.
Aye.
Guzman.
Aye.
Motion passed, sir.
Motion's passed and carried. Item five, there being none. Item six, ordinance approving authorizing execution of an addendum short-term lease agreement to office based located at Waukegan City, City Hall, 100 North Martha de King Jr. Ave. Motion by Alderman Newsom, second by Alderman Felix. Any questions to the motion? Roll call, please.
Alderman Martinez.
Aye.
Felix.
Aye.
Newsom.
Aye.
Turner.
No.
Donahue.
No.
Florian.
Aye.
Hayes.
Aye.
Bolton.
Aye.
Guzman.
Aye.
Motion passed.
Motion's passed and carried. Item, ordinance amending zoning classification, approving map amendment for R 3 to R 4, 642 South Martha de King Jr. Ave, zoning calendar 2796. Motion by Alderman Bolton, second by Alderman Turner. Any questions to the motion? Ro. Questions, no questions to the motion? Roll call, please.
Alderman Martinez.
Aye.
Felix.
Aye.
Newsom.
Aye.
Turner.
Aye.
Donahue.
Aye.
Florian.
Aye.
Hayes.
Aye.
Bolton.
Aye.
Guzman.
Aye.
Motion passed, sir.
Motion's passed and carried. Ordinance approving conditional use permit for multi-unit dwelling in 642 South Martha de King Jr. Ave, zoning calendar 2797. Motion by Alderman Bolton, second by Alderman Turner. And Newsom, any questions to the motion? Roll call, please.
I'm sorry, who was the first and second on that, sir?
Uh, Newsom, second. Bolton was the motion, motion by Alderman Bolton, second by Alderman Newsom.
Thank you. Alderman Martinez.
Aye.
Felix.
Aye.
Newsom.
Aye.
Turner.
Aye.
Donahue.
Aye.
Florian.
Aye.
Hayes.
Aye.
Bolton.
Aye.
Guzman.
Aye.
Motion passed, sir.
Motion's passed and carried. Item seven, motion to authorize Finance Department to execute professional service agreement with MGT Impact Solutions for the purpose of continuing professional services for an amount not to exceed $82,000 and for a time period not to exceed beyond May 20, May 29, 2026. Motion by Alderman Newsom, second by Alderman Felix. Correction, Alderman Felix. Any questions to the motion? Alderman Florian.
Thank you, Mayor. I have a couple of questions. I'm not quite sure who to address this to, if it's finance or HR. I'm curious why we're using a temp service out of Florida? We have several right here in Waukegan. I know I pay my part-time help through a temp agency, and you can walk into a temp agency and say, "I want to hire this person for this amount of money," and they'll do it. So I don't know why we ended up having to go all the way to Florida when we could have done it with one of the temp agencies right here in Waukegan. Can somebody tell me the answer?
Good morning, Alderman. I believe that's where they're headquartered at, but specifically, the professional services that we're hiring are the agent that's part of this agreement that has the experience in this department to be able to carry out the initiatives that...
Right, but that's not my question. So why is it going through MGT Impact Solutions out of Florida? Why didn't you use Express Services right here in Waukegan? You could have walked into there and said, "We want to hire this person for this amount of money," and they would have done it. Why did we have to go through MGT?
Are you referencing the person that we're contracting?
No, I'm referencing the temp agency.
Right, well, the, the temp agency is the contracting the individual that has the experience that we need, not Express Services.
Right, but didn't you want this particular person? Isn't this why you did this? You didn't just go to MGT and say, "Pick someone," and they said, "Oh, pick your old finance director." I mean, that would have been a real weird coincidence.
Yeah, no, it, it happens that they employ the old finance director, and that benefits myself, being that she has the experience being in this role through 2021.
Why, why didn't we just directly contract with her like we did for Alderman Moisio, former Alderman Moisio? We made a contract with him. We said, "Here, we'll pay you, I believe it's $60 an hour to work for us." Why didn't we just do that? Oh, yeah. Why didn't we just do that? Why did we have to go through this whole agency thing anyway?
I'm not sure. The, the agency is the, the way that we want.
Okay, and did we negotiate at all? Or did this person just say, "This is how much I'm going to cost," and we said, "Okay, that's how much we'll pay you?"
The agency provided the figure.
So we're paying $145 an hour for this person? Just so everyone's clear, she's, she's not going to work full-time, but if she did, she would be making $300,000 a year, which is by far the most, I believe, the city of Waukegan has ever paid anyone.
The contract itself is for $82,000, so it would be $160.
She's not going to work full-time. She's not going to work on location.
Correct.
Whoops, we've agreed to let her work remote, which none of our other employees can do. So we're, we're allowing her to work remote. We're paying $145 an hour. I mean, this, this just seems insane to me. We do not have money trees growing out in that, that area between the police department and the city hall. I mean...
Yeah, in comparison to the prior contract, it was $120 an hour, so $145 is in the range.
I mean...
Can I?
Yes.
Alderman, Alderman Turner.
Yeah, I wholeheartedly agree with Alderman Florian, but there are some other concerns as well. This individual signed a no-hire agreement, and that agreement was our agreement. We, the city, said, "Hey, we're going to do this for you, but you got to do this for us, and that is that we will not hire you again, and you won't ask to be hired again." Right? That's called a no-rehire agreement. And, and, and I know this because I actually sued one of my employers previous years ago, and I signed one of those, right? Can't go back to work, they're not going to hire me. So here we are, going to rehire someone that sued the city, that signed an agreement at our insistence as part of that settlement, signed an agreement not to work for us again. Now, we're going to go in, round the ground, our own agreement, and bring her in as a contractor. That's wrong, wrong, and wrong. Additionally, as I understand it, Mrs. McGolski lives way up north somewhere, about Green Bay. She's going to work remotely, as the Alderman spoke to. But if she comes down here for a meeting, she's just got to be here. We're going to pay for her travel to come into the office. That don't work. I've been contracting consulting since 1987. Man, I'm telling you, that just never happens. But we're going to do it. We don't have money growing off trees. We're spending a lot of money to rebuild Waukegan. We're doing streets, sidewalks, alleys, all kinds of infrastructure stuff. We're buying vehicles. We're going to purchase land. We're going to build a fire station. We're going to build a new police station, and we're going to hire one employee for the equivalent of $300,000, $300,601 or something. And, and this isn't, this is someone who's agreed not to work for Waukegan. And we made her agree to that. It's part of the settlement, cash money settlement. You can't work for Waukegan. Now, we, here we are going to violate our own agreement. Make it make sense. My vote is no.
Thank you, Alderman. Alderman Hayes.
This person, no matter how qualified she is, sued us. Taxpayers paid to resolve the lawsuit. She agreed not to be rehired by the city of Waukegan. The city of Waukegan agreed not to rehire her. In what world are we entertaining bringing somebody back into City Hall to work with us that previously sued us for, I understand it, $3 million? If I'm wrong, somebody, somebody fact-check me on that. We have certified public accountants that live in the city of Waukegan or the surrounding communities. As was pointed out to me, and I think is obvious to everybody else, we're here in between Chicago and Milwaukee. We do not need to go to Green Bay to find somebody to do this job remotely at a significant rate to then pay them to travel down here to work. If I remember correctly, there was recently If I remember correctly, there was recently a challenge to a contract that we were entertaining, entering into over vacation time. Somebody was going to be paid for vacation time, and we went back against that. In my opinion, we make a fair amount of silly decisions up here, but this would by far take the cake. So I think that we put stock in people that live a little bit closer to us, and worst-case scenario, we go with the agency that we've used before, which is Robert Half Consulting, and ask them to provide us with a CPA on a short-term basis at a competitive rate. We didn't even shop this around. What do you want us to pay? Great, we'll pay it. And risk another possible lawsuit?
Alderman, we're going to stop you for a second. Please go ahead, sir.
So I don't want to get into the prior lawsuit because that really, you're voting on the contract. I will tell you, I've seen multiple times where parties, you know, you can sign a settlement agreement saying, "We'll do a new, not do a rehire," and, you know, whether you like it or not, or believe it or not, there's been multiple occasions throughout the state where municipalities have agreed to rehire someone and the parties have agreed to rehire. So that, I'm just stating, you know, kind of what that fact of is that the idea that you couldn't, but that's not actually what's happening here. It's a consultant agreement, so for my purposes, it's not actually a rehire agreement. And maybe you think I'm just, you know, playing with the words, but quite honestly, I've seen multiple occasions where agreements have, the parties have agreed. Like, we could enter into an agreement, you and I, that you wouldn't rehire me, but then we may agree later to say, "You know what? I want you back. I agree, I want to be back. I just don't..." I want to address that because I think it's, there's a statement being maybe that you can't do that at all, and it happens all the time.
Okay, real quick, because I was cut off. That's a distinction without a difference, and with the utmost respect, you don't have a vote, and you are trying to persuade us one way or another.
Alderman, stop, Alderman, stop. I'm sorry, Alderman. That is not what he's doing, Alderman, please. He was making a statement because I wanted to be clear that we don't get into some things that while those things, what happened with that particular past employee surfaced here, it happened with...
That is context. We vote on context. People want to know, people deserve to know.
Alderman, I'm not here to try to stifle your voice. I want to make sure that we do not get into the reason that all of this happened with a past employee, with a former Alderman and past mayor. Let's deal with what we want, either yes or no. I hear you. If that's not what you want, Alderman, I get it. Okay, so thank you. That's what I want to make sure.
I'm not finished, because when you ask if there are any questions, we have an opportunity to ask questions, we have an opportunity to make comments. It's not a simple yes or no.
Okay, Alderman, thank you.
Because I'm looking out here, and people are shocked at what they're hearing. Some people are in disbelief.
They should be shocked at what happened. That's what they should be shocked about.
I thought we weren't getting into the merits of the lawsuit.
I'm just telling you, if you're going to go there, then we go there. Let's deal with...
What happened there?
Well, no, we don't want to do that.
I don't want to go into past litigation.
That's not there. All right, no, Alderman, you have some comments. Please finish your comments, sir. Thank you.
What I don't appreciate is when you disagree with me, you cut me off.
I apologize if I cut you off. I was really trying to get to a point to make sure we don't go someplace else.
The point, Corporation Counsel is here to advise us, and I appreciate his role here, but there was no question for Corporation Counsel in that moment. So, I've said my piece. I sit at the last meeting, but people deserve to know.
I agree.
Qualifications aside, as I understand it, there is no issue with this particular individual's qualifications. She is familiar with the city. She was, I am told, an exemplary employee. She was great. So I am not here to talk about the person, I'm here to talk about the circumstances. And I'm also in utter disbelief that we can't find a certified public accountant that can help us out closer to home at a more reasonable rate. We just did not renew a contract for a very qualified individual, and maybe, you know, financial accounting wasn't his strong suit, and maybe it was closer to budget-related responsibilities, or so I'm told, but nonetheless, we literally just went, let somebody go with unbelievable institutional knowledge of this city. I am willing to bet that he is smart enough to be trained to perform that role. We have a pool of individuals. I know that we have a hard time hiring people, but we can find somebody. I have confidence in that. We don't need to go to a temp agency in Florida to do that for us. So this is something everybody needs to think carefully about.
Thank you, Alderman. Alderman Martinez?
Yeah, we keep going back and forth here, so all the circumstances that has arisen, I'd like to put this on hold and see, maybe I need to do more research, more homework before I draw my vote whether yes or no. If I can get that, I would appreciate that, so I would like to put this on hold for now.
Are you asking to hold it over, Alderman?
Yes, sir.
All right, just to be clear, at next council meeting, we need to vote on this and move forward. And thank you, Alderman, for your commentary. Thank you, Alderman, for holding it over. Motion's been held over.
Thank you.
Item eight, there being none. Item nine, Alderman's time.
Alderman Martinez?
Okay, thank you, Madam Clerk and City Counsel. I would like to begin by giving my condolences to the family and friends of Alderman Don Weekly, where his unfortunate passing. Don was the trailblazer and served the city with grace and admiration, and as a leader, he inspired countless lives through his unwavering dedication to public service. Another condolences I would like to give is for the family of Delilah Carmen Vega, who unfortunately lost her courageous battle to her illness. Delilah's bravery and resilience inspired us all. We were honored as a city to present her with the Waukegan Proud Award last July, where she was applauded for an inspiring spirit and a love for all, despite her health challenges. She braved. I will miss her dearly, and I most definitely will miss her hearty hugs and her bracing. Condolences go out to her loving mother, Rosemary, who loved her unconditionally regardless of the challenges that she faced in life, and her father, Hector. I would also like to remind our Leith Avenue residents about our upcoming Neighbor Watch program, which is going to be this Wednesday from 6:00 to 7:00 sharp. It will be held at 523 Leith Avenue. Freshest will be served. Special thanks go out to our community policing officer, Christian Luca, and our block captains, Mr. and Ms. Saul Cruz, for their unwavering support and dedication to making this happen. Next, I would like to mention the 2026 Road Program Streets that will be addressed for the third ward. Now, this is very tentative, so it is nothing written in stone, but if something changes, I most definitely will share that with my constituents. We will have Baldwin Avenue repaid from Washington Street to Grand Avenue, and also Cornelia from Metropolitan to the dead end. Special thanks to Director Chris Garland and his amazing staff for all that they continue to do for our ward and our city. And with that being said, I am thrilled to announce that the sidewalk now connects Brookside to the Brookside Campus School, transforming a once treacherous route for students into a safe and welcoming path. For many years, the students bravely navigated the street under extreme conditions, but thanks to the tireless efforts of public works and complaint from parents, that challenge is now a thing of the past. I've received countless compliments from parents who are deeply thankful for our consideration of their child's safety while walking to school, a true testament to the power of collaboration and community spirit. Thanks again to Mr. Garland, your staff for honoring my concern and making it happen. And finally, I'd like to address the reimbursements of Washington Street after years of neglect in the street I personally drive daily. Washington Street is being totally repaid and would be better road to drive on thanks to the collaboration again of the council and mayor, who made this his priority. This is part of the rebuild Waukegan, and thanks for making this happen. On a personal level, I don't like that this is happening, and again, I hope that we never had to experience this unfortunate thing with the road being broken up. So Mayor, I'd like to ask you a question. What does the maintenance program look like for the upcoming years to come to maintain the road in the condition that it will be? Do we have any information on that?
I do, and I'll make sure I write this down so we can have a thorough response only to, but to all of it, what a maintenance program should look like for the city of Waukegan in years to come. But thank you for asking. Good question, though, real good question.
Thank you. All right, and then also, I also want to thank the council for approving the special order with the situation with immigrants. For those who don't know, I worked for a non-for-profit for five years, and what we have, we have children who come unaccompanied from the border. So I've been dealing with this for five or six years before ICE was even here. These are individual kids that come from different parts of our country. It is a work in progress. I thank my constituents for taking part and responding and being responsible, but it is something that I have been dealing with for many years, so I get word and say, "Well, what are you doing about it?" You know, just today, I wrote a letter of commendation and also of character for one of my constituents who was very productive, and unfortunately, he was taken from ICE. I've been working with his family. So this is something that's been going on personally for me for many, many years. I look forward to work with any group, any individual, any agency, any non-for-profit to try to better our situation, and I agree with what's going on. It's terrible what we are experiencing, but again, I want to commend the council and the mayor for what we're doing, and there's so much more work to be done, but this is definitely a first step in the long run to go. If you need to get ahold of me, I can reach at 847-390-2689. I just ask my constituents to please be safe, be mindful more than ever, and let's all be great neighbors. Thank you and good night.
Alderman Felix?
Thank you. To piggyback off that, last week, we did, we took an important step together. We passed a resolution. And to make this very clear, that wasn't just a vote, that was a statement. That was us saying that we stand with our community. We stand with hard-working people who make Waukegan what it is. This has happened before, slightly different, but history does repeat itself. With that being said, there's also actions that people took in those times that people can go out there and research and bring it forth, like, can we do this? Can we do that? This is a time to look at our history and say, "How did people come together? How did they work together? What happened in those times?" As we, this is new to us here too as a council, so we're doing our end to see what we can do. We're working with our community partners. They're on the front end, but this is the time to lean in. What can we do together? What has been done in those times of civil rights? You know, what is their current process now? What has happened before, people have been deported before, but because they were crossing over a lot still, right now it has stopped, and they're still wanting to make numbers, which is why you see a lot of the people, everyday people, hard-working people being taken away. That being said, keep working together. Talk to us. See what you know, what you're hearing, what you're seeing other communities do, any ideas that you might have. Might not be able to do everything, but we can definitely have that conversation and see what we can do. If not us, then our state, our county, we're all willing to put our hands in there and work together. Speaking on Washington, I'm happy that we're getting Washington done, something that is meaningful, is one of our, is a major part of my ward, the fourth ward, the corridor, the Washington corridor. I have two bars there, maybe three in the future. They're fixing it up. You know, we, that road is key to bringing in our dollars, you know, and making a better economy, not just in bars, but also with food, and just people would be wanting to invest in a place in Waukegan if they have a nice, you know, flow of traffic, and it looks nice, looks better. So, you know, thank you, Mayor. Thank you all the, all the Aldermen in our council that has, you know, that voted for this because it's something that we truly need in our community. And I'm happy that we're getting smaller streets in my ward as we're going up. The smaller streets are going to get done. I think someone called me up, they thought that Five Star, what is it, Mayor? Do you know what the mayor, what the name of that company is? Five Star something? Five Star Construction. They're going knocking on doors, trying to do the test to see if we had, they have lead pipes, you know, that is someone that we hired and that we're working with, so get it done. If you get it done in your street, probable that we're looking to do that street because of the changes, especially in the smaller streets we're leaning up to, you know, the Washington Street. So this is a good look. We're making progress on our infrastructure at least. I have heard some critiques about how some of the sidewalks are done. Our focus is doing the street. We can do some repairs on the sidewalks, so we're doing them, but our focus is on the road, and we'll have, I'm pretty sure we'll develop, or developing a sidewalk program. Right now, we're focusing on that. One thing I do want to bring up because it has happened before in my ward is as we start doing work and people have, you know, their parking space is taken, Mayor, if we can address this maybe on our social media, what are we going to, are we able to specifically around Washington not start ticketing people? It did happen in this administration, but I just want to make sure that our traffic team knows not to find people if we're working there and they have to move somewhere else. If we can address that, please. Also, in my ward, we have three streets right by the high school, I believe it's Chapel, Victory, and, yeah, Victory, and I forgot what's the other. No, it's the third street, right by the high school. We're starting to enforce resident parking. Why? Because, you know, sometimes people park there, they shouldn't be parked there, especially during school, you got high schoolers parking there, but also, what I, some of my residents that they reach out to me, they've had gunshots, you know, during the day. Someone's waiting there, someone's parked there, they get targeted, and boom, you have our neighbors being scared, you know, that this is happening. I've seen the videos, they showed it to me, so this is something that we definitely wanted to, I wanted to enforce again because we already have the ordinance. So the next, Monday, I saw our chief, I asked him, you know, "Can we start?" Because I already walked through every street and every door, and I put some information so that people can know, because the parking, the resident parking is free, they just have to get it. The next day, we had 37 citations. So that was the next day, and hopefully, I mean, last time I went to the high school to check, their parking for their students is not full at all. So hopefully, they can take advantage of the parking with the school, which is safer, they get to be in a safe, you know, school zone. With that being said, this didn't happen on its own. I got input from the community, and, you know, if you bring a problem, we'll see what we can do with our current ordinances, otherwise we can develop new ones. That's it for me. Thank you.
Alderman Newsom? Alderman Turner?
Thank you, Madam Clerk. All right. You know, Don Weekly, who the mayor spoke to, spoke about his passing, was, it's kind of really weird and interesting for me because I'm not from Waukegan, and, but when I got involved in the community and politics way back in 2000, for 26 years, Don Weekly was someone who I came to know, not as closely as the mayor, but he was an advisor to me in some, many instances. He gave me a lot of good advice, and we had a really interesting relationship, he and I and Dick Hyde. We, they used to tease me, and I would tease them unmercifully. Dick Hyde was Army Air Force, Don Weekly was a Marine, I was Navy, and it just, you know, it strikes me as time passes and we lose so many of those that we were connected to. And while Don and I had a loose connection, I really admired him and I appreciate him. I'm sorry to hear of his passing. And it was quite prophetic that, Don, I've forgotten how many years he was in the Marines, but, you know, last month, October 13th, was the Navy, US Navy's 250th anniversary, and next week on November 10th is the Marine Corps 250th anniversary, so I salute my comrade in arms, Don Weekly and his family. And I, you know, I'm extremely proud to be an American, I'm proud to live in Waukegan and be a part of Waukegan, I'm proud to be an Alderman, and I've had a number of accomplishments throughout my life. I'm also proud now that I've been asked to create an oral history for the Library of Congress, which I'll do next week, and I will be certain to include my life here in Waukegan, which I love and appreciate. Okay, thank you. In the sixth ward, we're doing some resurfacing, I've mentioned this before, we're in process of doing a resurfacing on Chestnut Street between Ridgeland and Glen Flora, also on County Street between North Avenue and County. We're doing a couple of alleys there between Ash and Chestnut and attending 1100 blocks in one alley, which was flood and constant, this whole engineering, I mean, it's a total redesign of that alley and a 1200 block between North and Hickory Street, and I'm happy to report that progress is being made. We'll be wrapping that up here shortly. Next leaf pickup is coming up on November 12th and 13th, and that'll be both Alderman Newsom's fifth ward and my sixth ward. And don't put your leaves in the street, and I've now asked specifically that our co-compliance officer write notices of violation. It's really interesting because I went around the ward, I don't know how I missed it over the summer, but there were a lot of places where leaves were laying in the street at the gutter line, the curb line from last year. They were crumbled and, you know, dusty, but they were there. And then Alderman Felix mentioned the Five Star Construction and their LSR or Service Line Replacement Project, and they're out trying to, I mean, going to door literally to make contact. And the sixth ward, they've been out a number of times, I think at least three times they've been to doors, leaving door hangers, a little note on the door says, "Contact us," et cetera, you know, a number of the superintendent or supervisor there. So this, last week, I went out with them Wednesday, Thursday, Friday. We're between Hickory and Jackson Street, between the 407 or 800 blocks of those streets. The challenge is that a lot of people don't want to open the door. They don't understand, they think it's a scam or for whatever reasons, so I encourage everyone, read those door hangers. If you have questions, I left my business card, call me, I'll explain it to you. We've made innumerable efforts in the last year and a half to communicate this through our website, through, I think we did some mass emailings, we did some mailings, we did some, I mean, we made an effort, and I continue to make that effort, so please adhere to it, you definitely want to take advantage of it and get it done. All right, so that's all I have for tonight. Thank you for your attention, thank you for your time. Good night.
Alderman Donaworth?
Thank you, ma'am. I'd like to express my condolences to the Weekly family and their friends. He was here when I was hired at the police department, so I definitely saw him around, and I've talked to him, and not recently, but, you know, I definitely... to him and not recently, but, you know, I definitely talked to him about a lot of things and I was very happy with, with, with his responses, so I'd just like to express my condolences on that part. Also, the city staff, I want to thank, because every time, every day, I'm talking to them and they take care of the business that I need. Our first leaf pickup, the first one went well and hopefully, the second one here on the tenth and eleventh, and the twenty-fourth and twenty-fifth will also go well. I didn't have a lot of complaints from anyone that called that said they kind of missed the leaves, but I did have a couple where they kind of missed the house, but then I believe they came back. And also, I'd like to express, please, alternate parking, park on the right side of the street, that way, you know, street cleaners can get through and, you know, God forbid it snows quick, that the plows can get through. And again, just, you know, stay safe, be alert, if you see something, you don't know what's going on, make a phone call, call somebody, but, you know, definitely stay safe because, you know, it can be a dangerous season right now and just keep your eyes open and make a call if you need it. Again, thank you.
Alderman Florian.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. I too would like to express my condolences to the Weekly family, some of whom I know personally. My first memory of Don was when I was probably about eight, he came to my house to ask my parents to vote for him. He was the alderman of the second ward where I grew up, I'm not sure whether they did or not, to be honest, but I wasn't as into politics back then as I am now. But if he ran as a Democrat, I can almost guarantee my father would not vote for him because my dad was a diehard Republican, so, but anyway, unlike me, but anyhow, my condolences to the family, he certainly was a treasure in Waukegan and served our city well, so it's sad we're losing all of these pillars of our community, but that's what happens when you're around for a long time. I want to correct something I said, I've talked a couple times about the hospital and how their property taxes have not been paid for going on two years now, and my understanding of it would have been that the city and the schools would be out that money that would have normally gone to them, but I've learned that when a property owner fails to pay property taxes, the county sells the tax lien, which is the right to collect the debt to a private investor, and this indeed has happened with the hospital, a private investor has bought those taxes, so they were paid on behalf of the hospital. So, this sale provides immediate revenue to the county while transferring the debt obligation to the investor, the person that bought the taxes. The property owner, the hospital, must repay the investor plus interest and penalties within a certain redemption period to retain ownership. So, if you don't pay within a certain amount of time, it's possible to lose ownership of your own property. So, if the property owner does not pay the debt by the end of the redemption period, the lien holder, the person who paid the taxes, can petition for foreclosure to obtain the property's title through the court. For a for-profit hospital like ours, this poses a significant risk of loss of property ownership, interruption of operation, and potential displacement of critical healthcare services. My understanding is this foreclosure period starts in December, so we have a little less than a month or so here before they, the hospital needs to make their property taxes whole or they could face the potential of this foreclosure. So, we really need to stay on this, I mean, there's only so much we can do as a city. I had a conversation with Senator Johnson the other day about it and, you know, I feel like the state licenses the hospital, so I kind of feel like the ball is in their court at this point. They're a for-profit business, we as a city have no control over what happens at this point, but I think we need to be on guard for what our plan will be if they do indeed close. So, I just wanted to correct the record on what I had said about the taxes before. I attended a meeting recently with Safe Place and I became aware of a program they have called Flex Funds, and these are funds for victims of gun violence, I'm hoping our police department knows about this. It's an emergency victims flex fund and it provides financial support for victims of gun violence and their immediate family members impacted by the crime. You have to fill out an application and prove that you're indeed a victim, but the money can be used for housing and relocation support, medical and behavioral health care, essential needs of daily living, document replacement and emergency, emergency supports, replacing clothing, personal items, and then also emergency shelter or short-term hotel stays if that's something that's needed as a result of the gun violence. And lastly, I just, I want to talk a little bit about the resolution we passed, I had some remarks prepared for that special meeting and we didn't get a chance to speak, but when I ran for alderman over six years ago, I never expected to have to vote on a resolution to ban federal agents from basically kidnapping residents of the city on city property, I mean, who would imagine? I'm concerned because it's, it's not technically enforceable in my opinion, I mean, these are federal agents and we only have so much control over what they do, even though we ask them not to do it. I believe the job of the city is to provide vital services to the community, police, fire, public works, water, but not at the expense of human rights. And this is exactly what I feel is happening and what's being done on a federal level. There are reports of ICE detaining US citizens, even though they have no authority, in my opinion, to arrest citizens. There have been incidents of people impersonating ICE agents to kidnap, rob, or assault people. This is terrifying and I don't think it's gonna stop here. I feel these agents need to show their faces, I think these are the same guys who wouldn't wear masks during COVID, but now they're perfectly happy covering their faces. I think they should have to show documentation to prove who they are. I mean, our police wear a badge, they have a name badge, you know, they identify themselves, that's not happening here. And most importantly, immigration issues are a civil issue, not a criminal issue. This administration in Washington has decided to criminalize immigration and that is not, that's not right, that's not the way this country operates. Everyone in the US has a right to due process, citizen or non-citizen, everyone has a right to due process. I don't even feel like I recognize this country right now. Unless you're a Native American, you came from somewhere else. And technically, we white people stole this land from the natives to begin with, and now we're kicking people off of it, when it was land we stole from someone else. I just, my heart is broken for this community and for my country and I wish there was more we could do to put a stop to what's happening. Thank you.
Alderman Hayes.
Well said, Lynn. Pass.
Alderman Bolton.
Yes, I'd like to make an announcement to notify you all of dates. Our non, our faith-based and our non-for-profit organization breakfast will be November twentieth here in the council chambers, November twentieth at nine AM. And our last gathering, our first one, really, it was very successful. And then I want to let you know about the first ward's leaf pickup. The first one will begin this week, projective, now, these are just projective dates, November fifth, November sixth, November nineteenth, November twentieth, December third, and December fourth. And I'd like to bring awareness to, as you go down McAllister in the first ward, it's been resurfaced, it looks just awesome, and we are presently working on Martin Luther King and Lennox resurfacing the streets and upgrading our sidewalks. And I'm glad, I give a shout out to and salute Black Lives Matter, their dinner last night was awesome. And I'm glad we as the city are collaborating with, especially during this time, Cool Pantry, so we definitely want to support our veterans. And also, I collaborated with Waukegan Housing Authority for their pizza day on Lake Street, so it was a good event. And I want to give a thank you to our, I believe it was the Archbishop that showed up tonight, as well as our clergy in the past that is working with us and volunteering their service to us. That's all I have, thank you.
Alderman Guzman.
Good evening all, I wanted to say my prayers go out to the Weekly family, Second Ward Alderman. I don't remember him much, I, my family moved into the Second Ward when the late John Balin, the great John Balin, was alderman, so I remember him very, very well. Some people tell me I should remember him and unfortunately, I do not, but my prayers do go out to him and, and I hope they're safe and, and their family member get some rest. And I thank him as part of the Second Ward Alderman for his service as alderman. Second, Washington Street, the repaving has started, I remember how this conversation started with the last administration, I remember speaking with Jesus and I think Noel, we've had a couple conversations also, and I spoke to Alderman Felix and the ball started moving from there. And it's been three years since that, little less than three years, since that conversation started and here we are, finally getting it repaved, so I'm very happy about that. I was very happy to see that Junior ROTC was recognized today. When I was in high school, I actually, I actually did, I think, two years if I remember of Junior ROTC, it was, it was a great time, learned a lot, I actually did a couple camps while I was there, so kudos to them and for joining the military service. Yesterday, as Alderman Bolton mentioned, the Black Lives Matter, I was there, attended, I actually won a basket, first time I ever won, so I was like, cool, it was actually the first number, and the food, oh my God, I'm serious, what was it, eleven fourteen?
Eleven nineteen.
Eleven nineteen, Ten Street, oh, it was phenomenal, the food was really, really good. And, you know, I go to some of these places and, you know, the food is not so good, but this one was amazing, really, really, really good, I give it up to them and, and the people who spoke there, the inspiration of what their lives have gone through and the changes and, and what they mean to the community and where they go speaking from around the country, around the state, I mean, it's just totally amazing to see how the lives has changed around, just because you make one wrong turn in life, that doesn't mean it's the end of your life, you can change it and there's a lot of people out there that show you that, so remember that, please, just keep moving forward and you'll come out. I think it was last week that there was a, reporting a glitch for the licensing department, I got it myself about huge licensee fees, three thousand, two thousand, and so on and so forth, so please double-check your license on that and your bill is correct or not, has been fixed, but still double-check on that. Ward meeting, I'm looking to set one up, I'm wait, I'm gonna speak to David, see if I can actually get some yard signs so I could put around the ward for that meeting because usually I go out with like three to five hundred flyers and I, I disperse them, but Alderman Florian actually does this and I think it's a great idea and she gets a great turnout for her ward meeting. And mine, a couple of them were really great, but not as great as hers, so I would really, I would really like to see more people there, but, and we're gonna give that a try, see if that'll work out. The leaf, leaf season has started, it started Monday with the seventh and eighth ward, Monday and Tuesday, the first and second ward will go Wednesday and Thursday, which is the fifth and the sixth are, is our first pickup, so please keep a lookout for that. Finally, well, before the final, the resolution, I mean, I was very excited, it passed and everything. I mean, there's so many people out here that are immigrants that, that have come here and started the way they are right now, and look at where they're at now. I know my, my family came as immigrants and look at where I'm at. I mean, we got, I mean, not just to say, just because he's on the other party's line, the richest world and the richest man in the world, immigrant, and look what he achieved. Secretary of State, family, and I'm just, the reason why I'm mentioning them, they're on the other side, they are immigrants, okay? So, we can all coexist and live together, we don't have to do this, right? I mean, but nobody would have thought that we leave COVID and then jump into this, insane, insane, insane. I thought the country would have come together and moved us forward and be more prosperous, but we still have some work to be done and hopefully, we can move away from this and move forward. If you need to get a hold of me, eight four seven, three nine oh, twenty-six ninety. Thank you, have a good night.
Okay, that's it, Alderman Bolton, don't forget, it was lead line N replacement in those areas for those, I think in six ward two, lead lines and resurfacing, so please don't forget. With that being said, we've got nine B executive session, motion by Alderman Hayes, second by Alderman Martinez, to go into executive section to consider, to consider the appointment, appointment of legal counsel pursuant to five ILC one twenty dash two, parentheses C, parentheses one, to consider settlement pending litigation pursuant to five ILC S one twenty dash two, parentheses C, parentheses eleven, to consider the release of closed session minutes, twenty fourteen through twenty twenty-one, five ILC one twenty dash two, parentheses Cs, parentheses twenty-one. There's a first and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Hold on, uh-oh.
Mayor, I'd like to also to add to that reason to go into closed session under two C eight to discuss security procedures and securities within school buildings.
Okay. Any questions to the motion? All right, we'll convene in five minutes?
Five minutes.
Five minutes to, da-da-da-da. For all intents and purposes, council is over, if those like to stay, you can, we're moving to go into executive session, an executive session, we talk things that we cannot talk out here. When we come out of executive session, we're just going to adjourn the meeting, so you're welcome to leave. When we come out of executive session, we're just going to adjourn the meeting. So you're welcome to leave.
Motion about alderman Deuce, second about alderman Downward, you read.
Aye.
Go back into the motion.
Aye.
All those in favor.
Aye.
Motion for Patrick Carey.
Aye.
Motion about Alvin Martínez to adjourn. All those in favor.
Aye.
Good call from me, everyone.